The May 10th meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission is hereby called to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Donham, Phil, Hirschbein, and Lou, our absent Commissioner Hudson.
Present.
Commissioner Middleton.
Present.
Vice Chair Womack.
Present.
And Chair Kellardine.
Present.
Four members present, we have a quorum.
The Planning Director please report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, May the 4th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law. Mr. Chair, if I can just take a couple of minutes to the members of the public. We are here at the Convention Center while the council chambers are being renovated. This isn't exactly the most perfect setup for us. We do have microphones here. I need to remind the members of the Planning Commission to make sure that your mic is on as you are speaking. We also have a mic for the public that you can use as you are speaking. And as you can see, we're having a problem mounting drawings to the walls, so just bear with us as we make do in these temporary changes in these temporary chambers. Thank you.
It's just a big camp out. Acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items on the consent calendar that anyone wants pulled? Hearing none. We do have item 2D, which the Dream Hotel, which unfortunately is going to need to be continued today due to lack of a quorum of members that can vote. We have three members absent, and I live within two blocks of the hotel and thereby have to recuse myself. So we have a problem where we have, we do not have three votes, or four votes, that is to have a quorum to discuss the item. So I think when we get to that point, we will move to continue. I would ask that if anyone wants to testify on the Dream Hotel, they do so under the public comment section that's upcoming. I see some people out there with the Dream Hotel books, so I suspect they have some comments. That brings us to public comments. This time has been set aside for the members of public to address the commission on the consent calendar and any other agenda items, and items of general interest within the subject matter of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes is allowed for each speaker, and for the four public hearing items, that's items 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D, there will also be an opportunity to speak at those, at that time. With that, is there anyone, if any members of the public would like to comment on any item on the agenda or other matters for us?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I don't quite reach there. So today you have the sign ordinance on the agenda, and so I just want to speak right now rather than waiting just in case it didn't make it or some odd thing happened. So you're a very fine planning director. Flynn Fag has assured me that what is contained in here is the same thing from last time, because I must admit, I am not a planning person or anything like that. So I did go over the other one, and I had some advice given on that. So provided that it is the same document that I saw before, I just wanted to tell you that from a Main Street perspective, and we've talked about it probably even more than you have, we feel that some fine compromises have been made in this, and we accept it as it is written. And based on the fact that we've been talking about stuff like this for honestly as many years, probably as I've had my business, 30 years.
And will continue to.
And continue, because things have to evolve. But I just wanted to let you know that from our perspective at least, this might be the easiest thing you have to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment at this time? Please bear with us as we learn the technology in this new facility.
Good afternoon to the Planning Commission. And I do want to add, sometimes I come in and I'm pretty emotional and pretty rough on you, and I want to apologize when any of that is unfair, and that's always a possibility. So I just want to start by saying that to you. It's a very tough time right now for the city, from some of the issues we're going through, and I know we're very intense about those. But what I did want to talk about today is that a matter may be coming back to you, and that may be 750 lofts, for purposes of the fact that this is televised, and members in the audience, 750 lofts is a project that occurred between Indian Avenue and Palm Canyon Avenue across from Trio. It is in the Las Palmas Historic District, and it is under the historic guidelines where the requirements or the guidelines require a two-story building, and it has previously always had a floor area ratio of a building coverage of about 35 percent. There was a 2015 project that was approved, that development went up to four stories plus an event center on top. There were some proposed parking deficiencies that were litigated. A court decision came down, and last week, the City Council actually rescinded the PDD and rescinded the approvals on 750 lofts. The question that I'm bringing back now for the Planning Commission and the Historic Site Preservation Committee is to what extent, and I'm glad that Mr. Fag is here, I am unclear on how this is going to affect the reprocessing of this, and whether this vacates the entire approval, which it appeared to, whether that reinitiates another review by the Planning Commission and the Historic Site Preservation Board. I went in and talked to one of the City Council members this morning, and I said, "Look at the PDD ordinance 94.03." When a project comes back with any kind of modification, whether that's a court order or not, it's an issue under 94.03, it's either a major or a minor modification. But regardless of what it is, it comes back under 94.03 to the Planning Commission. And the other question is whether it would go back to the Historic Site Preservation Board. That will depend on whether that review comes back to you. If it does, and I don't think the City Council has determined that yet, if it comes back to you de novo with a new application, then everything is up for review, and it would go back to the Historic Site Preservation Board. If it comes back as a major modification, and the elimination of the activity on the fourth floor probably would be designated a major modification, that also brings up that determination, so I wanted to bring that to your attention today. Thank you very much.
As you know, Judy, we cannot discuss that item today.
Yes, yes, I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about it, Mr.?
No, just this public comment.
Could you give some briefing on what happened with that item later?
I can try and do that at the end of the meeting. It might be more appropriate for the city attorney to discuss that, since I haven't been involved in the discussions with the court case.
Just keep us up to speed. Are there any further public comments?
My name is Mike Stewart, and I also live too close to the Dream Hotel to be able to--
Mike, can you speak real into the mic? See if we can raise that mic up to, the mic up to Mike.
My name is Mike Stewart, and I also live too close to the Dream Hotel to be able to vote on it, and I may not be able to be here on the 24th. I have a conflict. So I just wanted to be here to let Planning Commission know that there are neighbors in the area who live very close to that hotel project, who are very excited about what is proposed there, and have been kept up to date with what has been going on there, and I would have spoken just in my full support of the project and the way that it has really accommodated all of the concerns that I have had about that hotel and many others who live close by to me. And so I just wanted to make sure that Planning Commission knows there are neighbors who may or may not be able to be here when that project is heard, who support it fully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional public comment at this time? Okay, continuing on. I'll entertain a motion. Do we, how do we do motions and stuff here? And I guess we'll have to do them the old-fashioned way.
Yes, we have to do motions the old-fashioned way. One of the things that I would request, Mr. Chair, is under the acceptance of the agenda, if we would have a motion to continue item 2D, which is the Dream Hotel item--
You want to do that now, rather than--
Yes, I'd like to do that here up front, just again, so the public is aware of the date that it's continued to.
I'll entertain a motion. I probably shouldn't make it to--
So moved.
Second. Oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Womack. Excuse me.
Should continue at your next meeting.
Right. Is there, how do we call, I'll call the, how do we, we do it by voice or by?
By voice.
Does she call the roll? Okay. Okay. Gosh, we haven't done this this way in so long, I've forgotten how to do it.
Commissioner Hudson.
I'm sorry?
We're voting on moving--
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Chair Womack.
Aye.
Chair Kellardine.
Yes.
Question passed, it's 4-0.
Aye.
So for the members of the public, the Dream Hotel will be heard on the May 24th Planning Commission agenda, and we would invite you back for that if you're able to attend.
Okay, next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Womack and seconded by Commissioner Middleton to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, or do I need to do a roll call? Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. City of Palm Springs for a zone text amendment to amend Section 91 dot 00 dot 10 and Sections 93 dot 20 dot 01 through Sections 93 dot 20 dot 11, and to add Section 93 dot 20 dot 12 to the Palm Springs zoning code sign ordinance. May I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, thank you very much. This item was scheduled for your last meeting, the April 26th agenda. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to consider it. We appreciate those who wanted to attend and sat through that entire meeting, and unfortunately, we did not quite get there. And so the ordinance that you have before you today is the same one that was on the agenda at that point in time. There have been no changes to that. Let me just go through the changes to the ordinance itself, why we are doing this. The main reason why the city is going into its sign ordinance is because of a recent Supreme Court case. This was relative to a city in the state of Arizona and their temporary signs that they had. And essentially, what the Supreme Court decision did was it ruled out any signage regulations based on content. When we look at things such as content-based signs, those are signs that are based on a specific message. Examples of that would be real estate signs, political signs, grand opening signs, et cetera. And so that is the main reason why we are making changes to the sign ordinance. There are also other changes that we are considering at this time. One of those is changes to our portable sign ordinance. As you're aware, we've had portable signs in existence in the city since approximately 2010. It did have a sunset ordinance in it of October of 2016. The City Council Subcommittee that has been working on the changes to the sign ordinance have looked at a number of proposed changes to our regulations for portable signs, and so that will be one of the things that we discuss today as part of the changes in the ordinance. With that, let me go ahead and go through the significant changes that are proposed to the ordinance. First of all, let me talk about temporary signs. Currently in our code, we have a number of sign types that are regulated by content. Those include real estate signs, election signs, political signs, construction signs, grand opening signs, et cetera. In order to be in alignment with the Supreme Court decision, we are eliminating all of those sign types and changing those to one category that we call temporary signs. And so we will be regulating all of those sign types under a new section of the code that will be called-- under a new section of the code that will be called temporary signs. Because again, the whole issue with the Supreme Court decision is you can't treat those types of signs differently. And so that's one of the significant changes that we are making. Just going through the changes to temporary signs. So now that we're considering all of these types of signs to be the same, we distinguish by zoning district, which is in accordance with what the Supreme Court would allow us to do. So for temporary signs in single-family zones, we have two options. Number one, you're allowed to have two eight-square-foot freestanding signs or one sixteen-square-foot freestanding sign and one four-square-foot window sign. So for example, if you have a real estate sign, you're selling your home, you could have up to eight square feet for a real estate sign. And let's say this is during an election period. You'd also be allowed to have an election sign in your yard. And so that gives you some degree of flexibility in terms of what you choose to do. It's the square footage and number that's regulated rather than the content. For temporary signs in commercial and industrial districts, we don't identify a number or a maximum square footage. However, it's based on the maximum square footage that would currently be allowed. We're not making any changes to the maximum square footage permitted in commercial districts. To give you an example, if a commercial property is allowed to have up to seventy-five square feet of sign area and their existing permanent signage equals fifty square feet, then they could have up to twenty-five square feet in temporary signs on the property. Again, we don't regulate the number. It's the square footage that would be regulated. And so that's how temporary signs would be regulated in commercial districts. It's by the maximum amount of square footage that you're permitted. In multifamily zones, the same requirement would apply. We're not changing the sign area that's permitted in the multifamily zones where we have apartments or hotels. Again, it's just the maximum number that regulates. There's a lesser square footage allowed in those zones. So for example, if the permanent signage is twenty-five square feet, you're allowed up to a maximum of forty square feet. Then only fifteen square feet would be allowed for temporary signage. And so those are the distinctions for temporary signs in our single-family districts, our multifamily districts, and our commercial districts. Associated with that, there are a number of changes relative to other types of signs that are content-based. For example, we used to have a sign type called restaurant menu boards. Again, because that's content, we have to take that out of the ordinance. We're now classifying those as service signs, which is a type of sign that's already permitted in commercial zoning districts. And so the restaurant menu boards will now be called service signs and permitted under that section of the code. And then there are things such as theater attraction boards or theater marquees. Those are still allowed. It's just we're classifying those now as a wall sign or a monument sign and giving them the maximum square footage there. Let me talk about portable open signs. Currently, our regulations only allow the portable signs in the downtown and uptown areas. What is being proposed, one of the significant changes, is that would now allow the portable signs in all of our commercial and industrial districts. And so we're no longer distinguishing certain areas that are allowed to have them. We're allowing that to apply equally in all commercial districts. You may recall that there had been requests from those in the Sunny Dunes area who also wanted the portable open signs. This would address that. And again, it does give that opportunity in other commercial districts. In terms of the sign regulations, the size of the signs, there's no changes to what is being proposed there, nor to the number. It's still one per tenant with street frontage or frontage on a parking lot. There is one significant change in terms of the design standards. And what the proposed ordinance does is it requires the planning director to establish aesthetic criteria for the signs. What I would propose that we do under that language is put together a member of the AAC and the Planning Commission to work with stakeholder groups, including our Main Street group, to come up with aesthetic standards that all signs would need to adhere to. And so that's what I would propose to do under that. Vice Chair, you had a question?
Are the aesthetic standards only for the portable signs?
Correct.
So it's not, okay.
Correct. And then lastly, I just wanted to clarify that the portable signs do require a permit. The language is that it also requires an encroachment permit if it's on the public sidewalk instead of on private property. And so that's one of the things that we need to verify through the permitting process.
Excuse me, Planning Director, I also have another question about the portable signs.
Yes.
Is there a maximum distance away from a place of business that one of those signs can be?
Here is the language in the code. It says that the sign needs to be placed between the primary entrance of the building and the street or parking lot that it fronts upon. And so that's the only language that we have there relative to that. But again, it needs to be directly in front of the customer entry. One of the things that I need to talk about is placement of those signs if they are in the public sidewalk. It needs to be a minimum of three feet from the curb. And then we also need to maintain a minimum of forty-eight inches for ADA access on the public sidewalk. Now, there may be certain locations where that distance is not possible. And so in those instances, a business may not be able to have a portable sign. And I just want to make sure that that's clear is we do need to meet the minimum clearance distances in order to have those signs.
Does that include the private sidewalk as well?
If it's on private property, then no, that wouldn't be an issue.
So it could block the sidewalk?
Because it's, it's the public sidewalk that needs to remain open. Let me talk, oh...
I'm sorry, maybe this is covered somewhere, but I just want to make sure I understand this. I, it's very clear the way, the way these square footages are distributed per zoning area. But let's take an example of a, an open house sign for a house that's for sale that's remote from the house site. I mean, we've all seen those. We've all seen directional signs, let's say, to special events. I think in one of our communications from the public, we had a reference to an A-frame sign, which is actually quite remote from the place of business. So do these new regulations totally negate the possibility of having those signs?
The language in the ordinance is that the signs need to be on private property. And it's the intention that they need to be on the property that is being offered for sale. It still allows the separate for-sale sign and the open house sign because again, you can have two temporary signs. One of the things it doesn't allow is the directional signs that had been previously permitted.
I'm quite surprised if, if meetings were done with stakeholders, I'm surprised that real estate agents would have agreed to that. But it is what it is.
Commissioner Middleton?
I'm not sure Flynn, if this is the right time for this question or not, but...
We really should, I would, let him finish and then we'll take questions of staff. What I would suggest we do.
And I'll try and get through this a little bit more quickly so that you have more than adequate time for that. One of the things that does change in terms of the organization of the sign ordinance, although it doesn't change the regulations, the standards themselves in terms of maximum number of signs or maximum square footage. We have reformatted the sign regulations into tables. Currently, as the sign code is organized, you have regulations in one section of the sign ordinance. And it's not until twenty pages later that you find out that you're allowed something else under the code. What we've tried to do is to organize all of the regulations for our commercial standards into one table. All of our regulations for our multifamily districts into one table. So that's one of the things you will notice is that the organization is a little bit different in that we've formatted it into tables. But we haven't changed the regulations themselves in terms of the number of signs permitted, the types of signs permitted, or the maximum area. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. With that, I'm going to go through each of the sections of the sign ordinance just to identify what the changes are. And I'll go through this, I'll try and be quick about this. First of all, in the definitions section, we have made some changes in that there were a number of sign types that weren't defined in our code. So we have made some changes there to clarify our regulations and to help us as we implement the regulations. Under the section dealing with prohibited signs, there is language there that does allow portable open signs in the public right-of-way. Any other types of signs would be prohibited in the public right-of-way. And then there's also the exception there for transit agencies. So for our bus shelters, they are allowed to have signage under the compact that they have. In the section for commercial signage, again, I've already mentioned the change about menu boards, restaurant menu boards. Interior real estate office signs, that's a content-based sign. So we've had to move that to another section of the code that still would be permitted. Attraction boards, we've reclassified those as wall or monument signs. And then the portable sign regulations have been added to our commercial districts. We still have a separate section of the code for downtown and uptown signage because it's more of a pedestrian area. It has slightly different sign requirements. Again, we're not making any changes to the significant sign regulations that are there. We have made the change to the restaurant menu boards and then the changes to the portable signs that I had mentioned previously. Under the multifamily and hotel districts, no changes there. Special provisions, this is the area that deals with special types of signs that typically had been content-based. We've made some changes to those. I had mentioned the change to interior real estate signs. Drive-through signs were never addressed in our code for drive-through restaurants. We now have a section in the code that deals with that. Those will be handled under the conditional use permit process that will review those. The City Council Subcommittee has also expanded language about sign districts that allows special sign districts to be approved for directional signage and wayfinding signage in certain districts of the city. It also makes a change that City Council approval is required for sign programs. There's also language there that the owner's authorization is required for signage on the property. So for example, on vacant parcels, it does require a property owner's signature for any signage on a vacant parcel. And there's been a slight reduction to the signage that's permitted for auto dealerships. Under temporary signs, again, I've already gone through those changes. On the temporary signs, it's all been merged into a single category. Under general provision, clarified the requirements for sign permits. We've also added language about maintenance of signs so that we have a, we can do a better job in terms of enforcement on that. We also allow the substitution of non-commercial messages. This is something else that came out of the Supreme Court decision that we cannot prohibit non-commercial messages where we allow signs in districts. It could either be a commercial message or a non-commercial message. It's still limited in the number or square footage. And then we've also added a reference to state law in terms of how it deals with vehicle signs. In the abatement section of the code, there's no changes there. There is one new section that has been added, and this is relative to street banners. What this does is actually codifies our current practice of the city manager allowing certain banners for city-sponsored events in the public rights of way. That would include both the banners that are on streetlight poles in the public right-of-way as well as the banners that we occasionally stretch across North Palm Canyon advertising city-sponsored events. With that, I've gone through all of the changes that's being proposed on the ordinance. I'd be happy to take your questions at this point in time.
Can I suggest that we just run down the row here since we don't have the machine to say who wants to... Doug, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Lisa?
I do have a few, just a few. When it comes to vacant lots and the owner needing to provide approval for any sign to be placed on that vacant lot, how is proof to be presented that the owner has approved the sign being put up?
For any type of permanent signage, we would be issuing permits. Where the difficulty comes is under temporary signs. And so that's one of the things that is going to be a little bit difficult on the enforcement side for city staff to verify. Where we do see multiple signs on a vacant parcel, this most often happens during our election season, as you're probably aware. Where there are more signs than would be permitted by code, that's when we would need to verify with the owner which signs remain and which signs were not permitted or authorized.
Did we consider requiring that there be some type of certification that was actually placed on the sign so that anyone going up would be able to verify, yes, the owner has approved?
That's certainly something that would be a good way to do that by having some type of a signed sticker. One of the things that we are going to be doing for the portable signs, and I'm sorry that I keep on, I don't know if it's me, but I keep on hearing that noise. I'm breathing. I'll have to stop breathing then in order to avoid that. One of the things that we'll be doing with the portable signs is we will have a permanent sign tag affixed to those signs. So as they get their permits, as they renew their permits, our enforcement staff will be able to look for that. On the other types of temporary signs, it's going to be a little bit more difficult. But certainly that's something that we can think of in terms of an administrative process to use as a way to verify which are appropriate versus which are not.
I'm almost a bit sheepish to ask this question, but I will. On election signs, pre, under the current code, as I understand it, election signs are not to be put up until thirty days prior to the election. Has that criteria been changed or...
I believe that the language in the code, and now of course I can't find my ordinance in front of me, is that there is a time period on our temporary signs. And I'm going to try and find that really quick if I can. Let's see.
Wasn't it sixty days?
It's sixty days.
My planning commissioners are telling me it's sixty days. So there is a time period. Now, one of the difficult things, again, because we're qualifying a lot of different types of signs in the past that were distinct in the past into one category. One of the questions that's come up, how do we do that with real estate signs? There's going to have to be some flexibility in enforcement of that. The event that's being qualified is the sale of the property. And so they're allowed to have the sign up in advance. Enforcement really comes on that portion. Once the sale has closed, that they need to remove the sign. Election signs, again, sixty days, I believe, is what we have in the ordinance prior to the event.
But isn't it thirty days now?
I'm pretty certain it's thirty days now. But also, you're calling these temporary signs regardless of what the message may be.
Correct.
Election sign no longer has a specific determination. Okay. Last comment, could you talk about in single-family neighborhoods, the allowance of a sign that would be sixteen square feet?
That's huge.
In size, that just strikes me as excessive for any neighborhood. And I, I'm reluctant to redo all of the work that's been done on this, by this committee. And, but I have trouble voting for a sixteen-foot sign in a residential neighborhood.
What you might do as you consider this ordinance before you today is that you might forward your recommendations on to the City Council as they consider the ordinance. For example, if you feel that the square footage on the residential signs may be excessive, you could forward a recommendation that the City Council look at a reduced sign area for residential zoning districts. I don't think you need to go into the specifics of the language, but forwarding your direction in that way would be appropriate.
And one last, on portable signs on sidewalks. I certainly understand three feet from the curb, keeping a four-foot distance. My concern is that portable signs be placed in such a way that an individual who is using a wheelchair or some other means such as that to, to traverse is not facing an undulating pattern of signs that make it far more difficult in a sidewalk area for them to traverse. And I don't see anything in here that requires standardization. I'm not sure that it's feasible to write an ordinance that does that. But it is a concern of mine that those individuals who, who are in wheelchairs find it, not just simply that they have the forty-eight inches, but that they have a pathway that is easy to traverse.
And that's a good thing to take into consideration. Let me just go back to your question on the time period. Mr. Newell has assisted me here and pointed out that under the current ordinance for temporary signs, they can be placed thirty days prior to the election, for election signs. And then the generalized language that we have in the proposal is now sixty days. So it does extend the period that those would be in place.
Commissioner Wormick?
Yeah, I have questions about the residential signs. And there are several kinds. And I, I agree with the single family, not allowing a sixteen-foot, but possibly allowing several signs that are of... but possibly allowing several signs that are of lesser size. Every house in my neighborhood has a permanent security sign. If you were to allow two signs, that one security sign would take up one of the signs. And I think that, I'm concerned about that, and I'm also concerned about the 60-day timeframe in a residential zone, both because of the real estate signs and also I think it limits the speech of a resident who might want their election sign out longer than 60 days. So I just have concerns about that. I'm wondering, is this how other, I know you were just at the national planning meetings. How are other jurisdictions dealing with the residential portion of this? And are some of them going to no time limits?
Let me talk about a couple of things. First, let me go back to the issue of having your security signs for your security agencies. One of the things that you might recommend to the city council is to exempt certain types of signs from the sign ordinance. And that would be those that identify home security because that's something that pretty much most people have. And it's an expectation that they be able to have those types of signs. So that might be one way to deal with that. In terms of what other communities are doing, as Commissioner Vice Chair Womack indicated, I was just at the National American Planning Association conference, and there were a number of sessions on the topic of Reed versus Gilbert and sign ordinances. What other communities are doing is they are moving in a very similar track that we are in terms of having very generalized requirements for all types of temporary signs, no longer distinguishing them by content. However, what you will find is there are differences in the communities, and it's all based on community preference and image. There are some communities that continue to have a time limit on the signs. It varies, again, based on the community, 30 days, 60 days, 120 days. There are some that have no time limit on them. In terms of size and area, again, it's going to be the gamut, and it's based on community preference. Where they are very similar, though, is the fact that they no longer distinguish real estate signs from special event signs and those types of things. And so you will see a variety of ways of implementing, but they are consistent in the fact that they no longer distinguish by sign type.
Thank you.
I have a lot of concerns and questions about this. First, with the city attorney, my understanding, and I don't want to play lawyer here, but that the federal government has always allowed differences in commercial speech versus political speech, difference in regulation of that. And I don't understand under that, with that understanding, rather, why we have to have the same sign ordinance for political signs, which is political speech, versus other forms of commercial signs like real estate signs. This leads to the, letting the political signs set the size for the real estate signs, which I think is, gets us to a completely unacceptable size for the real estate signs. I feel more strongly about that than even the other two commissioners that have spoken to that. Could you discuss that?
Yeah, I can expand upon that a bit. The court has historically differentiated between commercial speech as opposed to expressive speech in the terms of the level of protection the law would afford that type of speech. The Reed versus Tana Gilbert case, however, was simply looking at the issue of you've enacted an ordinance that allows for certain temporary signs, yet you're basically creating categories. The categories ahead in the case are ideological signs, political signs, and temporary directional signs. And what the court said is by creating these classifications, you're necessarily trying to temper the expression or the content of these signs. And if the court determines that a regulation is content-based, it's nearly impossible to sustain in terms of a defense.
I would, that just doesn't make sense to me, I'm afraid, and I don't want to get into redisusting, re-guessing what the Supreme Court wanted, but that you couldn't have a, that the political sign should then decide what size of real estate signs would be. Getting to the real estate signs themselves, there's a long history of these large signs being used to create panics in neighborhoods that actually then, you know, get people in panic selling when you have large amounts of these, you know, four-by-four, 16-foot square foot signs. I just don't think we, anybody in this town wants to see 16-square-foot real estate signs, for sale signs. And I think it would be very adverse to the aesthetics and the economics of the community. That this is going to be something that would really degrade the environment, and it has, it was used in terms of, you know, back in the East Coast when they were running, redlining to encourage white folks to move out, to create a panic amongst white folks that other ethnic people were moving in. These big signs were a key element of that. I know some of the histories of that. So I have a real concern with trying to make real estate signs that are that big. And...
To be clear, the decision would allow the city or the planning commission to impose regulations in terms of the size generally of signage. What the court's concerned with is the classifications as among the category of signage.
It won't allow a distinction between political signs and commercial signs.
That's right. If you had a requirement...
They allow that distinction elsewhere.
Yeah, what they don't want to see is an ordinance that would allow 16-square-foot real estate signs, but then temper back and have more stringent durational requirements or size for election signs.
Right now, I guess we allow 16-square-foot political signs according to the table here, but we only allow three-foot real estate signs. And we're, we get the logic that we're imposing the 16-foot standard, rather, on the real estate signs, which I think is going to be great, all sorts of other problems. Or I guess even your security sign could now be 16, or 16 square feet, you know? That seems, that seems a bit ridiculous if we say there can be no content restrictions and we're, you know, we try to allow for a political sign of a large size. That means we have to make every sign allowed will be a large size. Maybe it's time now to let members of the public, this is a public hearing, and if there are any members of the public that would like to address us at this point on this topic, Ms. Diertrach.
Yes, thank you. My name is Judy Diertrach. I'm a candidate for city council, and I've stepped up my monitoring of certainly the ordinances and legislation going on with the city right now. I am very concerned on constitutional grounds of what's happening on this. And for Planning Commissioner Calardine, I agree with everything that you've said, and I think there's been other comments. The concerns that you're raising are the same concerns I would raise. And I'm hoping, in terms of the action that you're taking, I'm concerned about grounds of constitutionality on this. For example, if political signs are treated in exactly the same way commercial signs are, if we have an election and there's six or seven candidates running, believe me, nobody can stop me from having six signs out on my yard because I have a right to have a different sign for every candidate. So I'm, and I'm sorry I didn't review this sign ordinance in any kind of detail. I don't know if that would be prohibited, but I would question the constitutionality of that. I love the remarks that you're already making, and my request to you is to ask for further clarification on these points rather than having to move immediately on this. Because these are constitutional issues, I think we don't have to hurry through it. And I hope that your concerns are alleviated before you vote for any kind of recommended approval on this. Thank you.
Okay, any further, any further public comment at this time? What is your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate the concern about the size of the signage in residential, single-family residential neighborhoods. I agree that a 16-foot sign or even two eight-foot square signs, I think, are just way too big. I'd be curious to have some of the reasoning that the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee on this came up with those dimensions. And because this is not, cannot be message-based, I think we just have to be pretty firm about a reduced maximum square footage, whether it be a single sign or two, you know, a couple other signs. Thank you.
Question, the 60 days that a temporary sign can be up. If I have a sign up for 60 days in front of my home, take it down for one day, do I then get to start a new 60 days?
The way the language is, is it's based on an event. So if it's a different event, then yes, you would be able to put something up. If it's a different message, yes, you would be able to put something up.
And so if my message was, I love Governor so-and-so, and my neighbor wanted to put up the message, I hate Governor so-and-so, we both could do that or could not do that.
You could both do that. Again, no regulation of the content, only the size and number.
Just simply we would have to take it down after 60 days, but then we would be able to put it right back up because our hate, our love had not gone away. All right. I'm inclined to move this on to city council, but I would like to create an exemption for security signs. I would also like to create an exemption for the no solicitation signs that many homeowners have citing the ordinance in the municipal code that prohibits materials being put on someone's home when they do have a no solicitation.
16 square feet, no solicitation?
No solicitations. And I would also like to identify that we are opposed to a single 16-square-foot sign in a residential neighborhood or two eight-foot signs. And personally, I would be also opposed to a eight-foot, square-foot sign in a residential neighborhood, less than with 16, but even an eight-foot sign.
Would it be appropriate for us to be opposed to any changes to the current ordinance?
Yeah.
I think that would be, and I know that we may be told we can't do that, but that's still, we can say what we want.
Well, the problem is if we keep our current ordinance, it's content-based, and we are not in alignment with the Supreme Court decision.
And our current ordinance also includes colors and other, other items that nobody enforces right now. I just want to speak to that because I don't think I can agree to the residential.
Is your microphone on?
I do have it on, yeah. I'll put it closer. I don't think I can agree to the 60-day on the residential because I think that people have a right to speech that might be longer than 60 days for a temporary sign. So I do agree with the sizing. I do agree with the two exemptions. The exemptions for no solicitation and security signs, I think those signs can be no bigger than one square foot, maybe half a square.
But that's content.
They're content.
No, area is, is not an issue. You can regulate sign area.
But why can't we make that a security sign, be one foot?
We would have to very carefully word that to identify that really is the purpose of it, but I think it's, we can look at a way to exempt certain sign types.
You know, I think with those, they're generally not big signs. And I think that, again, if my neighbors began to have an eight-foot square security sign, I would be concerned about that. But I'm not concerned about them having, I had a neighbor who had a sign for the first, running the first gentleman for vice president, which I thought was kind of charming, went up 10 months before the election. But it, I think people have a right to speech, and so I'm opposed to the limits. And I don't think you can regulate the real estate signs in single-family neighborhoods. So I'd be opposed to the 60-day limit there.
As far as the no solicitation signs, that was a recommendation of the city attorney to many people in one PS and other neighborhood groups in order to slow the mass distribution of material. And those signs are this size.
What are those again?
Yeah, they're about a half a square foot, aren't they?
Which signs are you talking about?
No solicitation signs.
And the security signs are the same size.
They were printed up in, there was a mass printing of them.
Under this ordinance, they could be up to 16 square feet.
Yeah.
Those may be permanent residential signs.
Would, if we have some concerns about this ordinance, would it be just more effective of, to us to say, hey, these are our concerns, give those to the city council? Or should we ask staff to come back with some alternatives? Or what would be the most effective thing, Mr. Director?
I think in terms of your recommendations, it would be most helpful to forward those up to the city council. Again, you've had a subcommittee that has been working on this for about the past eight months and would ask that those be addressed by the subcommittee to see if they can incorporate those as well.
Let's frame an ordinance to start with. We say, we're expressing the following concerns to the city council, and I'll move it. And Commissioner Middleton, do you want to second it? And then we'll add a list of concerns that we have as we go along. Would that be effective?
Yeah, that would be effective. I would like to get this done. Our downtown merchants, the merchants in the Sunny Dunes area have been clamoring for these changes for a very long time, and they've been quite patient.
I entertain, I would suggest that as part of that motion, we oppose any changes to the real estate signs from our current ordinance.
I wouldn't accept that.
What's that?
I wouldn't vote for that.
Okay. What's the consensus, Lisa?
I think we have to be contentless to meet the real estate code, so I think we're looking at size and duration of temporary signs. So if that's your motion, I just want to tell you in advance, I can't vote for it.
I think that that would then have us have to restrict political signs to three, to three square feet, if that's the way it's going to have to be.
I'm fine with, what size are they normally? Just, anybody running for council know what size they usually are?
What's the consensus? Lisa, what, how do you feel?
I think, I think four square feet would be an appropriate size for a residential neighborhood, although I will admit I'm doing that off the top of my head.
Are exemptions allowed to be content-based?
I would say no, off the top of my head, that it comes back to area. And so...
Are religious symbols considered a sign?
No.
Would it be acceptable to say we want to limit all signs in residential areas to four square feet?
I'm comfortable with that. I think the only questions we've had have been regarding residential areas. I'm not sure, just to get a consensus of the group, and maybe we can try that. I think we're fine with the sign ordinance as proposed with the exception of residential, one, single-family residential areas. And the changes I've heard was possibly allowing two permanent signs that would be half a square foot in dimension. And then for temporary signs, temporary signs would be limited to four square feet and without a time limitation.
Without a time limitation?
Without a time limitation.
And why, how can they be temporary?
If we put a timeframe on it, we are going to run into exactly the question that I raised to the commissioner that, or the director, that you can go for 60 days, then you drop it for one, and then you're back. And I'm reminded of one of our neighborhoods where, right now, there is a ongoing controversy between those who are supportive of our current president and those who are strongly opposed to our current president. And I don't think those feelings are going to go away in the next 60 days on either side or the desire to, to express themselves to their neighbors regarding the intensity of their opinions.
Nor do I think the intensity of the feeling of people who are opposed to vacation rentals is going to go away in 60 days, and those signs are in, in our neighborhoods in single-family districts. So there may be an event. I, I think they're still temporary because if there is an event, say an election, you still wanted, want them taken down. wanted, want them taken down within five days of the election. They're still temporary because you want them taken down within five days of the House closing escrow. But I think, I think the time limit otherwise is unworkable and it's unregulatable.
If I could just jump in for a moment, I'd like to point to the definition of temporary structure under the proposed ordinance. And this, at the end says, so it pertains to a particular event or occurrence, or which is not permanently anchored or secured to a building and not having support or brace is permanently secured to the ground. So I think when we talk about temporary in this context, on one hand, you could look at it as something that pertains to an event and has some sort of durational relevancy, or you're talking about a sign that is not a permanent fixture. So something like a sign that's staked into the grass, that doesn't have any sort of permanent mound or concrete base, something along those lines, may be a temporary sign, even though you intend to keep it out longer than 60 days.
So, so again, that's, that's the concern I have with this. And I think those are the, those are the concerns I would want relayed to the City Council. And otherwise, I think that, I think that with regard to all the other districts, they've done a really good job, but they need to look more at the residential with these concerns.
Okay, Doug, do you have any thoughts?
I'd just like to bring up a point that I made earlier, and that's the, the real estate signs that are off-site, remote from, let's say, an open house. You know, this, this, these set of regulations don't deal with that, but we know, I think, from reality that those are going to happen. So my only point to Council would be, can we somehow codify those as well, just so that there's no disagreement or confusion in the future? Because that's, you know, in terms of the real estate business, that is pretty much a necessity, especially for an open house, to guide people. And I think that'll come up at Council.
And to the extent we have gated communities, which we do, there needs, there will have to be signs out in front of them directing people.
Garage sale signs?
Garage sale signs, yes.
Okay, do we have, kind of, do we, we have it written down?
Here are the key points that I heard as a potential motion. Number one is that for residential districts, and this is primarily where your concerns are based, is that there needs to be a limitation, a greater limitation on the size of those signs, and you're suggesting four square feet as the maximum limit for the size of signs in residential areas. You would also propose to the City Council that they allow two permanent signs, not to exceed a half-square foot in area. Those would be your security signs or your no solicitation signs. And those would be exempt, and you would be allowed to have those. Also, that there be no time limitation on temporary signs in residential zoning districts. If there is an event such as a real estate where the property sells, they would need to be removed, or if they are directly to an election, they need to be removed after the election. But otherwise, that there be no time limit on the temporary signs. And then the other item is to allow a provision for remote real estate signs for either open houses or those properties that are, how should I put that, Commissioner Hudson, that are distant from a public roadway?
Are we going to run into problems with the content stipulation in this?
Um.
I wouldn't, I'd say remote directional signs because you're going to have Modernism Week, they're going to tell people where to go.
Okay.
That goes straight to the original case.
Yeah, those are, those would be directional to an event.
Okay. So allow provisions for remote directional signs as part of the temporary sign language. Does that capture it?
It captures it so far. I would like, if we could, maybe as, just as, as a minority report, or I don't know if anyone else wants to buy into this with me, but I think it should be, I remain concerned that, that, that normally we, we can regulate political speech differently than we regulate commercial speech. We have more requirements on commercial speech, and we're more liberal about political speech. And I think that we should try to follow, segregate political speech from commercial speech. And if anyone else wants, if everyone else is happy with that, we can add it to the ordinance. If not, I'd like it, just, just my personal statement to the Council. I don't see anybody else excited about it, so I will say, I'll leave it as just my personal, just, yes, move on here. Okay, with that, I think we should call the, you want to call the roll?
We need to formalize that as a motion with a second.
All right, did you want to make it, Lisa?
I think it was going to be, it was going to be, I think we already did, it was Keller Dine and Lisa. Should we, I think we should call the roll on this.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wermuth?
Aye.
And Chair Keller Dine?
Aye.
Motion is approved 4-0.
I appreciate staff forwarding my comments as well. Thank you. I have no idea what time it is. Do we need a break, or, you know, should we go to the next item? Which is, if I find my.
One long item.
Okay, yes. Review of the recommendations of the Ad Hoc PDD Planning Committee. Staff, report please.
Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this is the third time that you have seen the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Plan Development District Committee. We originally had this on your agenda on April the 12th for the April 12th Planning Commission meeting. You also had a study session on the issue on April the 26th. At your study session on April the 26th, you went through each of the recommendations, and at that time, you identified the recommendations where you wanted to forward comments to City Council, and there was only one recommendation that you did not want to forward to the City Council. What I've provided to you in your backup is a handout, which is now on legal size, that has an added comment column to it, which is identifying the recommendations of the Planning Commission or your comments. So we have the recommendations of the Ad Hoc Committee and then also your comments from the Planning Commission. And you'll notice that, again, nearly all of them are forwarded to the City Council. That was the action, that was the discussion that you had at the study session. There are a couple that you wanted to add comments to, I'll just go through those very briefly. And for ease of going through this document, I've now numbered these recommendations sequentially so that we go in order. So hopefully that will be helpful. The first was recommendation number 25, which talks about using the PDD process for environmentally sensitive parcels for clustering of housing and preservation of open space. This one you recommended to forward to the City Council, but with a notation where, to the extent that that issue is not covered by other ordinances. And then you also wanted to put it in another section of the document. So that was the comment that you had recommended there. On the next page, on comment number 33, you wanted to combine two recommendations together. Those would now be done under comment number 33. And then under comment number 37, this was the only one that you didn't want to forward to the City Council, and this is the one that dealt with the timeframe, the approval timeframe for plan development districts. The language that you had suggested was that the recommendation should reflect the same timeframe as the recent extension of time ordinance that was just approved at City Council last week. And so I have that notation there in the column. On recommendation number 38, you also suggested to forward this to the City Council. This is the one that's relative to the process for approvals, whether they should go to Planning Commission first for approval and then to the AAC. What I had captured under your comment is that the Planning Commission should review development standards and conceptual architectural design first, and then forward to the AAC for architectural review. The application would then be returned to the Planning Commission for final architectural review. And again, that was trying to capture your comments from the study session. The next one where there were, there was a comment was recommendation number 46. This is relative to gates around neighborhoods or developments. And what you had recommended was to eliminate the second statement there, that gating of private roads may be considered on a case-by-case basis upon making findings. That's the one that you wanted to eliminate, that language. And so I've struck that out in the document. On recommendation number 54, this was for small lot development require an average of 5,000 square feet lot area. And your comment was to clarify that the intent is to maintain an effective lot size of 5,000 square feet and common open space. And so that's the comment that would be forwarded to City Council. On recommendation number 66, you wanted to forward that comment to the City Council with a comment to remove the term significant relative to significant slopes, that we should consider standards to address grading of hillside parcels and slopes. And so we would take that term significant out. And then the final one is recommendation number 68, develop increased design standards or requirements for plan development projects. You had recommended to forward that to the City Council, but that it be added under the general requirements section. So that was my list of comments that you had on the recommendations. Again, the direction of the Planning Commission at the study session was to forward all of the recommendations to the City Council, with the exception of number 37, which was relative to the timeframe. And you wanted the notation that the timeframe for plan developments, the approval period should be the same as all other extensions of time.
Where's the Council review of our recommendations for those timeframes that?
They approved that at the meeting last week, and they kept the language as you had proposed. There was no modification to that portion.
So that's already in effect. Okay, Commissioner Wermuth?
Yeah, just a couple questions of staff. Flynn, on number 33 and 34, I'm assuming with Planning Commission recommendations, you'd be changing that from number eight and number nine to number 34 and number 35?
Oh, you're correct.
So that it would correspond. I think, I, I guess I have one question as these get forwarded. Things that we suggested moving to another section, that will be moved when it goes to City Council?
Correct.
And the, and when we're looking at something like the recommendation on 37, that there be a time period, what, what the recommendation would be, you'd be probably saying where, you'd be giving the Planning Commission recommendation and then saying that the committee had a slightly different recommendation?
Correct. I want to preserve the recommendations of the committee as they came out of the committee. And so I would note under the Planning Commission comments column, that Planning Commission had recommended that it be the same timeframe, which is the two years and two years.
Since we're forwarding this, shouldn't we be forwarding our recommendation with a notation that Planning Commission changed this? I just, that's something I would rather see so that when Council reads it, they know that there was an earlier recommendation, but there was a, somewhat of a change. But I, I would be thinking that we, we would be sending it to them with Planning Commission recommendations.
Correct. And I'll identify that in the column under the Planning Commission recommendations.
Commissioner Wermuth, may I interject on that?
Yes.
My understanding was that we had an obligation to forward the recommendations that came from the Ad Hoc Committee to City Council in exactly the same language as they came to us, that we could make additional comments, but that City Council was required to, to see the recommendations from the Ad Hoc Council in their unvarnished form.
The language in the settlement agreement is that the, let's see. The committee's recommendations shall be considered in good faith by the Planning Commission at a duly noticed regular or special meeting. The recommendations, the Planning Commission will consider whether or not to make any or all of the recommendations to City Council. So that's the language, is any or all. One of the things that I think is important, however, is to preserve the language as they came out of the Ad Hoc Committee so that City Council can see that.
I stand corrected, but I agree with you that I think we need to ensure City Council sees them in.
The original form.
I, I think it's important to see them, but I would want to show them what our recommendations. For example, the one that's moved is important that it goes in a different section, and it can say, this was moved by Planning Commission to this section as a comment.
Yeah.
That it was forwarded. But I'd rather they, knowing how people read things, they may only read the recommendations so that I'd rather, there be some way of bolding it or identifying that we've changed it.
Is staff going to recommend the Planning Commission recommendations or the Ad Hoc Committee recommendations?
We are forwarding as you recommend them, yes.
Okay, so that should form the baseline, right, for the recommendation?
And that, I guess, I had one more comment. I think we also had one comment that didn't come from the subcommittee, but came in the discussions was, and I don't know how we do that, that one of the impacts of the use of the PD was that the zoning code hadn't been amended, or it had slowed the process of amending the zoning code. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility of adding a comment from the Planning Commission to one of the sections.
What would you say?
I, I think what, what we had said was that, that with the use of the PD, as, as new, new forms, new permits were looked at, what, what happened was they went through the PD process instead of reforming the zoning code, and that.
So that, that's a commentary.
It was a, more of a commentary than a.
If you would like to either add that as a separate comment, or under recommendation number 61, it says, "Create new zones to accommodate the types of development actually being built." I believe the intent of that was to create new zones in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
Rather than using the plan development process. And so if you would just like to add a comment there that the Planning Commission.
If this group is agreeable to that, but I think creating more zones in the zoning ordinance.
Or amending the zoning ordinance.
Or amending the zoning ordinance to create different kinds of permits.
Making the zoning ordinance consistent with our general plan.
And that's also one of the key recommendations of the Ad Hoc Committee.
Something that I've, I always thought was a good idea.
Okay.
Luckily, we're a charter city, or it would be a requirement.
So we probably need public comment.
I know. Is there any further Commissioner questions? I, I still have some concerns about item 39, and that could lead to impracticality if we allow someone to come up and make another set of comments on what we've said, then we make more changes, are we going to be allowed to make more changes based on their comments, and then they are going to be allowed to comment on that? You could see how this could go. So I, it just, and that one needs to be very carefully implemented if we're going to do that. And I still have some reservations. It also provides an opportunity for people to get up and make very late hits comments on SEQA issues that, as you know, have to be responded to in the record. And that's typically when we have a SEQA, well, not so much in the city of Palm Springs, but in other locations that I've worked where you have a SEQA challenge, people come in and dump it on the very last opportunity to testify. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'm sure you're all excited about it with, I know one person probably is, but is there any public comment at this time? Mr. Ruse?
Chairman and Planning Commission Marvin Ruse from MSA Consulting and a member of the committee.
Yeah, we can't hear you. Some people, are you, are you able to hear me out there?
Yeah.
Okay, because we're, some of the other Commissioners can't hear me evidently.
Is it possible to tell what happened?
Yeah, I get it, I get it next aware.
Is it on? Okay. Marvin Ruse, I was on the committee, I'm with MSA Consulting and was a 20-year member of the staff. And Kathy's absolutely right, the reason that we're here is that the zoning ordinance was not always being churned on these new items because the PDD was handling it. And I think that, I think there's a lot of good recommendations here. I don't want to get into too much in detail, although there were two that. I don't want to get into too much in detail, although there were two that I started looking at. On the 54, on the zoning code changes for the small lot developments require an average of 5,000 square foot lot. I don't have any problem with the language. I think that the small lot ordinance may not hit 5,000. So, you know, this five or as adopted would be language, whether it's 55 or 45, whatever that would be. I don't think we needed to get into the, we didn't need to define anything in this ordinance, we were just defining direction. And on 62, I didn't read this this way before, but it says, remove language in the zoning code that specifically allows the City Council to approve modifications of development standards. That's not, as I recall, how the committee worded that. I think it was, there may be some specific items that we want to put in the code that should not be modified. But the whole idea of the PDD is to allow some modification of zoning code standards, not general plan. And I would just offer that. And thanks, thanks to commission for the support, and Flynn for all of the herding of the cats that he did. It was a very dynamic situation, and I'm glad I could participate. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't recall the committee making, actually saying 62 the way it is stated there.
Maybe we can respond to that when we get past public comment.
Do you have any further public comment?
Thank you. Judy Deartrack. And, Stephen, get this down. Okay, I give up. Marv is tall. Thank you. There you go. Thanks. My name is Judy Deartrack. This is a day of real celebration, and I have many thank yous. I certainly want to thank Ms. Wermuth and Lynn Kellardine from the Planning Commission. You served on the PDD Subcommittee. Marv Ruse served on the PDD Subcommittee. Tracy Conrad, Michael Johnson, Scott Bigby, and Mr. Hanson. And you worked long and hard and very conscientiously. Mr. Fag, you did a fantastic job of coordinating this, and there was long and hard work, very conscientious work. I feel it's going to lead to tremendous change, and I'm really happy about it. And I'm very proud of your work. This came about from a litigation agreement between Mr. Westman and the Dakota Project and People for Proper Planning. They requisitioned a study. I was the consultant on the study that did the data and the research. And I want to thank People for Proper Planning, because I think they initiated this, and as a result of their work, there was going to be a lot of change in this city. And it shows sometimes what's a healthy outcome of litigation. We think litigation always leads to negative results. This has been a very positive result. I also, and I excuse, ask for your forgiveness, must have created confusion, I think, with the Planning Commission, who did want to hear from me on the actual recommendations as the consultant on this. And actually, perhaps I wasn't clear enough about that, the reason I wasn't commenting a great deal on it is overwhelmingly I support those recommendations. I think to some extent, what I did want to convey is I'm the person that swam in the data for two years straight. And it was a unique experience that I feel that needs to be described. I want to keep describing what that was, because I'm the only person that I know of that did that. I went back over 90 case decisions in 11 years and spent approximately five or six hours on every single one of those, pulling out that data and trying to understand the use of the PDD. I did come out with some preliminary questions. I think it's going to be important for you and the City Council. You're going to have PDDs continue to come before you for review. My recommendation is when you see a PDD, it is a request to rezone the underlying land. It is quasi-legislative because of that, and so if you're not happy with it, you get to tell that person, go back home. Because you have almost unlimited discretion on a legislative item to turn it down. And I want to be sure that you understand that power. And I will be talking to the City Council about that as well. Thank you very much. And thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public, further public comment? Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the commission's pleasure? I would suggest a recommendation to approve the comments as modified?
Right. I'm going to recommend moving the comments as modified with some changes.
Can you make sure you're speaking in your mic?
I'm going to recommend moving the comments as modified with some changes. And those changes would be that you present the recommendations of the commission with a comment that, forward this to council, or we made changes and give the original language. I think that I'd rather see our recommendations go. There are a couple of items, number 34 and 35, just the cleanup on that. And then the 37, I think the recommendation of Planning Commission was that we have a limitation on extensions, but that it matches, we agree with them, that there should be a limitation on extensions, but that it should match the most recent recommendation that we sent on to City Council, so we should use the same language. But I don't want us to look like we were disagreeing with the subcommittee. Number 39, I think that Lynn's comments, and I don't know if the group would agree with us, that it would be one round of comments only on conditions, and that it couldn't be comments on SEQA if they were not, that staff would have to craft that in such a way that we're not allowing comments on environmental issues that we can't take comments on. There's a way of doing that, Flynn. On the, I think Marvin was correct on the five, the committee recommended 5,000 square feet. And what I would recommend to City Council was that, that we basically, I agree that there's an effective lot size, but that we pass a small lot ordinance that creates an effective lot size and a provision for common open space.
Lynn, do you have that?
And then the only other one is number, number 62, there's a lot of language to that effect in, I think, the general plan and the zoning code, which doesn't need to be there. The council retains the right to make changes, but we didn't need to specifically call it out. I think that's where that comment came from.
I believe one of the references that we looked at in the ad hoc committee was, for example, in the city's high-rise ordinance, where it says, this is the open space that's required, this is the additional setback that's required, but these may be modified by City Council. And I think it was those specific references-
And so-
-that the committee wanted to remove from the zoning ordinance.
Remove so that we didn't create the impression that you could always make changes, even though the council has the ability to make changes. So I don't know if there's a way of improving, improving the original language of the recommendation.
Let me do that in the comments of the Planning Commission to clarify where those references occur.
And then on number 66, on slopes, I agree with taking out the word significant. I think what we were wanting to do is getting, get grading standards on any property that has slopes. So that, that was, I could be wrong, I think that's where our comments were going to, is developing standards for grading. But with that, I don't know if anybody seconds what I'm suggesting.
I'll second it. Okay, are there any further commission comments on the motion in front of us?
I just want to make, on a matter this important, a couple of general comments about what we've done as opposed to posing questions. This, there's been a lot of disagreement around PDDs, and that a group of folks could come together and develop 68 recommendations that are almost unanimous in agreement as to how we should proceed going forward is, is something to be celebrated. It truly is a remarkable achievement. I think that a couple of things that I want to add is, there also is near unanimity that PDDs are an important planning tool, just one that had been significantly overused in our city. So going forward, the test is not going to be whether or not there are no PDDs that come before us, but that there are fewer PDDs that come before us and more projects that come before us by right of zone. And I'll be looking forward to seeing that happen. And the last thing I want to do is congratulate the director, everyone who was associated with this project, and thank them for their work.
Okay. The other additional comment I would make really on what Commissioner Middleton said, this is going to be a big change for the city and our process. We are going to have to do some zoning change, zoning amendments to actually have our zoning match what we really want to do here. One of the biggest things we do with the PDD is use it as a patch-up of our rather dated and inconsistent zoning ordinance. So we're going to have to resolve some of those issues. And that's going to mean, from the council's point of view, some budget for some, doing some updates, which, you know, I have long champion, I think Kathy has too. But that, there's really going to have to be some different, different things to make this work. With that, I'd like to have the secretary call the role, please.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wermuth?
Yes, with pleasure.
And Chair Kellardine?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, I'm going to declare a 10-minute, what time is it?
Oh, hold on. Two, three o'clock.
Okay, intermission until, till 3:10.
Where are the restrooms?
What's that?
A hike down the road. I'm glad you reached in. No, you shouldn't. That went well.
Oh. Flynn, Flynn, what was this, this?
Well, that's on, it's not in front of us today, that's on the laws.
I think so.
I kind of think so. They really sound like they're one way to make it all work.
Yeah.
They're classing.
Nice casual sort of place. Good for that, that little area, I think.
It's a good place to be. It's nowhere from the lanes it is now. Okay, so you go down. It's the corner of the new main street. Commissioner Hudson?
Okay, I'm going to declare a 10-minute, what time is it?
Well, that's on, it's not in front of us today, that's on the laws.
Guys, think you'll be moving forward today?
I think so. I kind of think so. They really sound like they're one way to make it all work. Their classmate.
Casual sort of place, good for that, that little area, I think.
It's a good place to be. Um, it's nowhere, the lane is now, yeah. Okay, so you go down. It's the corner of the new Main Street.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Warmick?
Yes.
And Chair Caladine?
Yes.
Motion approves 4-0.
Okay, that, there's items 2C, 2D has already been continued, and that gets us to unfinished business. Item 3A, MG2 for architectural review and land use permit for the storefront design and outdoor seating space for the proposed Tommy Bahamas Restaurant and Retail Space located within Block C of the Downtown Palm Springs specific plan at 111 North Palm Canyon Drive, Suite 150. But it's good to see, it's very good to see that we're coming in with the designs for these buildings, that for each of these individual storefronts, finally. 2D? It was continued at the beginning of the meeting. I'm sorry.
Could we take public testimony?
Oh, it's not a, yeah, do we, is, did you want to testify?
No.
No, we have a, unfortunately, we have three members absent today, and a fourth, one other member of this commission lives in the immediate neighborhood and therefore is by law, has to recuse himself. So, that would be me. And, so I, we don't have three, we don't have four members, we don't have a quorum to vote on it. Do you have two illnesses and a funeral? Okay, staff report, please.
Chair Caladine and Commissioners, as you recall, at your April 26 meeting, you reviewed the proposed Tommy Bahamas Restaurant and Retail storefront located at the corner of Palm Canyon Drive and Museum Way, also known as Main Street. So, the, at that meeting, the commission reviewed the exhibits and expressed some concerns with the location of the planter near the corner, the planter and shade tree, and directed the applicant to prepare an exhibit that was accurate with the plans that had been approved for the hardscape and landscape plans for the downtown project. So what is being brought back to you today are those plans. And I'm sorry, the plans that we have behind you are not sticking to the wall, so what I'll do is I'll go through what I have here electronically. Mind you, that these plans were what are, what you received in your packet. Today, you also received three revised sheets. Those are sheets two, three, and six of those plans.
Did I get those?
And basically, what that is, is just making a few corrections that I can go over at the end of the presentation.
That's easy.
Correct. So the first sheet shows an example of what the applicant would like to do with the space. It, it's a rendering showing the outdoor seating area adjacent to the corner planter that is raised and would be utilized as a seating space. So that's shown here in this exhibit on sheet three. Again, this is the old one that you see up on the screen. The new one, it shows the, the planting, there's, the current screen, the one on the screen currently shows planter, a planter where there are actually parking spaces, so you'll notice that difference on page three. There's actually a parking area where some of those plants are located. But again, what it is showing is what the applicant requests, and that is option one, to have seating adjacent to the raised planter near the corner. And this exhibit does reflect what was approved as a part of the hardscape and landscape plans where the tree planter is, is to be located.
The only part that was approved was the tree planter, correct?
The tree planter and the, the hardscape, the pavers. So the pavers would be consistent with those that were shown on the plans. Moving on to the next sheet, sheet four, this is a rendering showing some conceptual visuals of that space with the applicant's requested layout. And again, on sheet five. On sheet six, we have the alternate option, which is option two, described in your staff report. And this, what is occurring in this, on this sheet, sheet six, is, the planter has been relocated further away from the storefront and is closer towards the, the curb and the corner, and would allow for additional public access around the planter and the shade tree. And this was, this item, or this exhibit is more in line with what staff was recommending in terms of its allowing better circulation around the planter while still allowing the applicant to utilize outdoor seating adjacent to the storefront. So, the exhibit seven shows what the proposed shade umbrellas would look like under the option one plan. Sheets eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, those are a part of the original packet that went before you. So those have not changed. Those all still reflect what the applicant's option one plan.
We didn't, we didn't get new versions?
No, those would not have changed.
So.
So again, it was just sheets two, three, and six that changed in your exhibits. So, as a part of that, they also did some reconfiguring of the seating areas. Staff made a recommendation about the permanent installation of a bar along the entryway that is no longer part of the proposal. They are showing seating instead. So, the AAC recommended approval of option one, subject to three conditions. However, staff still recommends option two, as, as we mentioned, it, when we reviewed the guidelines under architectural review, guideline, or criteria on one discusses relationship of structures and sidewalk areas, and we felt that the, the option two is a better design for, for the space. So the planning commission could today accept the AAC's recommendation and the applicant's request, approving the first option, or approve the second option as recommended by staff. In either case, we would bring back a draft drawings.
Okay. And there's a graph here showing area, square footage, seat counts, and as I total the exterior square footage, it comes to 2,019's, as originally proposed, and seating for 90 people in the dining area and 30 in the bar. But when I turn to the revised option on page six, I do not see that same kind of graph, so can you tell me what the revised square footage would be for exterior space and the revised seating counts would be?
I would probably ask the applicant to give us some clarification on that. I don't have that information in the immediate moment.
I would like to, to know that.
I have a question. This plaza was added at the direction of the council when we did the last review of the specific plan, as I recall. Do we, the council state their intent there that that should be a public plaza, or was there any discussion? And I guess a secondary question, when we went out there and took a tour, we were told there was a site for the tree. And which is, is that where, is that with, alternative one or alternative two? Would the tree be moved, I guess, in one of the alternatives? It sounded like for alternative two, the tree would be moved, what we saw.
Let me address the first question, and then Mr. Newell can talk about the tree. Relative to the additional space there at the intersection of what we formerly referred to as Main Street and North Palm Canyon, it was the intent of the city council, as they were looking at changes to the specific plan, to create additional open space and views. Those were the primary reasons why they required additional setback along Main Street and then also there at the corner. So I believe it was the intent that the plaza area at the corner would be public space. And Mr. Newell, if you could talk to the tree.
Sure. So when we, when the, when we, the commission held their special meeting to visit the downtown project, they, as we understood it, placed the location of the tree.
by law, has to recuse himself. So, that would be me. And so, I, we don't have three, we don't have four members, we don't have a quorum to vote on it.
It's continued at May 24.
Do you have two illnesses and a funeral? Okay, the staff report, please.
Chair Caladine and Commissioners, as you recall, at your April 26 meeting, you reviewed the proposed Tommy Bahama Restaurant and Retail storefront located at the corner of Palm Canyon Drive and Museum Way, also known as Main Street. So, the, at that meeting, the commission reviewed the exhibits and expressed some concerns with the location of the planter near the corner, the planter and shade tree, and directed the applicant to prepare an exhibit that was accurate with the plans that had been approved for the hardscape and landscape plans for the downtown project. So what is being brought back to you today are those plans. And I'm sorry, the plans that we have behind you are not sticking to the wall, so what I'll do is I'll go through what I have here electronically. Mind you that these plans were what are, what you received in your packet. Today, you also received three revised sheets. Those are sheets 2, 3, and 6 of those plans.
Did I get those?
And basically, what that is, is just making a few corrections that I can go over at the end of the presentation.
That's easy.
Correct. So the first sheet shows an example of what the applicant would like to do with the space. It, it's a rendering showing the outdoor seating area adjacent to the corner planter that is raised and would be utilized as a seating space. So that's shown here in this exhibit on Sheet 3. Again, this is the old one that you see up on the screen. The new one, it shows the, the planting, there's, the current screen, the one on the screen currently shows planter, a planter where there are actually parking spaces, so you'll notice that difference on Page 3. There's actually a parking area where some of those plants are located. But again, what it is showing is what the applicant requests, and that is Option 1, to have seating adjacent to the raised planter near the corner. And this exhibit does reflect what was approved as a part of the hardscape and landscape plans where the tree planter is, is to be located.
The only part that was approved was the tree planter. Correct.
The tree planter and the, the hardscape, the pavers. So the pavers would be consistent with those that were shown on the plans. Moving on to the next sheet, Sheet 4, this is a rendering showing some conceptual visuals of that space with the applicant's requested layout. And again, on Sheet 5. On Sheet 6, we have the alternate option, which is Option 2, described in your staff report. And this, what is occurring in this, on this sheet, Sheet 6, is the planter has been relocated further away from the storefront and is closer towards the, the curb and the corner, and would allow for additional public access around the planter and the shade tree. And this was, this item, or this exhibit is more in line with what staff was recommending in terms of its allowing better circulation around the planter while still allowing the applicant to utilize outdoor seating adjacent to the storefront. So, Exhibit 7 shows what the proposed shade umbrellas would look like under the Option 1 plan. Sheets 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, those are a part of the original packet that went before you. So those have not changed. Those all still reflect what the applicant's Option 1 plan.
We didn't get new versions?
No, those would not have changed.
So.
So again, it was just Sheets 2, 3, and 6 that changed in your exhibits. So, as a part of that, they also did some reconfiguring of the seating areas. Staff made a recommendation about the permanent insulation of a bar along the entryway that is no longer part of the proposal. They are showing seating instead. So, the AAC recommended approval of Option 1, subject to three conditions. However, staff still recommends Option 2, as, as we mentioned, it, when we reviewed the guidelines under Architectural Review, guideline, or criteria on 1 discusses relationship of structures and sidewalk areas, and we felt that the, the Option 2 is a better design for, for the space. So the planning commission could today accept the AAC's recommendation and the applicant's request, approving the first option, or approve the second option as recommended by staff. In either case, we would bring back a draft.
Drawings.
Okay.
And there's a graph here showing area, square footage, seat counts, and as I total the exterior square footage, it comes to 2019's, as originally proposed, and seating for 90 people in the dining area and 30 in the bar. But when I turn to the revised option on Page 6.
Did we get that?
I do not see that same kind of graph, so can you tell me what the revised square footage would be for exterior space and the revised seating counts would be?
I would probably ask the applicant to give us some clarification on that. I don't have that information in the immediate moment.
I would like to, to know that. I have a question. This plaza was added at the direction of the council when we did the last review of the specific plan, as I recall. Do we, the council state their intent there that that should be a public plaza, or was there any discussion? And I guess a secondary question, when we went out there and took a tour, we were told there was a site for the tree. And which is, is that where, is that with, Alternative 1 or Alternative 2? Would the tree be moved, I guess, in one of the alternatives? It sounded like for Alternative 2, the tree would be moved, what we saw.
Let me address the first question, and then Mr. Newell can talk about the tree. Relative to the additional space there at the intersection of what we formerly referred to as Main Street and North Palm Canyon, it was the intent of the city council, as they were looking at changes to the specific plan, to create additional open space and views. Those were the primary reasons why they required additional setback along Main Street and then also there at the corner. So I believe it was the intent that the plaza area at the corner would be public space. And Mr. Newell, if you could talk to the tree.
Sure. So when we.
Talk about the tree.
When the.
Did I talk to the trees?
When we, the commission held their special meeting to visit the downtown project. They, as we understood it, placed the location of the tree as it was approved in basically the first option. So what you see on, on Page 3 is what, where the tree was to be located when you were out there.
How far has the tree moved under the second option?
Yeah, it, I'm not certain. Maybe the applicant can give us some additional clarification on that.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah. Do we want, does he, can the applicant, who's here representing the applicant?
Can you finish with questions?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Actually, we need, Commissioner Warmick has some questions that she wanted to pose first.
Yeah, I'm assuming these aren't our two options. Our additional option is to approve it with less seating.
That is another option, correct.
My, the additional option is to approve it with less seating. As I'm looking at the second option, you moved the tree. Staff, did staff draw this? You're saying it's staff preferred?
No.
So, this is.
So, no, this is, this was provided by the applicant.
Okay, so this is a second with, with the tree moved. Okay, that, those are my questions.
Chair.
We'll get to it.
I'm sorry. I have a question of the applicant, and it's not really a design question. In my mind, I've got to think that a lot of this is predicated on seat counts. We were told that the interior seating is, is quite limited, and the model is that most of the seating for dining and for the bar is outside. And I guess my question is, and I really hope I can get an honest answer, is what is the target seat count? I mean, I realize with restaurants, in terms of the economics of it, that there often is sort of a cutoff point. And if the applicant could just answer that question, it can be arranged, but I'd sort of like to get an idea because, just to be to the chase here, I think a lot of this is predicated on, you know, the number of two tops and four tops outside there, and I think it's important that we know what the target seat count is.
Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Frank Kennard. I'm Design Director for Tommy Bahama. Nice to see you folks again. Our original target, as you said, because the interior space is somewhat limited, and because we were also trying to develop a property that took advantage of downtown Palm Springs, the weather, the outside, all of that. Our goal was to be in the neighborhood, ideally, if we could have gotten 200 seats, that would have been terrific. It gets a little, you have to be careful because we have a bar business, we have a dining business, but we also, in this particular location, we're kind of blurring the lines between the bar business and the dining business because we want it to be more casual, we want it to be more inclusive, we want people to be able to come in off the street and interact with our businesses, whether it's food and beverage, or whether it's retail, and make it easier for them to come and go and, and pick their choice as to how they want to dine with us or have a drink with us, that type of thing. So, if I go back to our original premise that we presented when the tree was, for all intents and purposes, closer to the corner, which was what we were provided by the landlord all along, that allowed us to be in the neighborhood of 185 seat counts. And that was a little lower than maybe what our target would have been, but we were feeling pretty comfortable about that. We were feeling that because of the concept, we were going to be able to have a turn differently from a Palm Desert experience that you might be more familiar with. I think where this gets challenging, to your point, is that in the options that we've laid out, based on the tree being moved towards our patio, if you will, that, if that becomes completely public space around the tree, the planter itself, we have to have a setback of enough space to give that accessibility around the tree completely. That's where we really drop down to a concerned level of tables, regardless of whether they're two tops, four tops, bar, dining, whatever. So if we were to go with where the tree was moved towards our space and make that completely accessible 360 degrees, that drops our seat count down to approximately 150 some. So now we're dropping by upwards of 30 to 40 seats, depending on how we can fit tables in the shape, that we have to make the space to pleasantly work with the tree and work with the pavers, work with the landscaping, that type of thing. So, the options that we're presenting today, where we are showing integrating the tree in the pushed-back space towards our patio, that puts us into kind of a middle ground in terms of seat counts. The reason we showed the other option with the tree back and giving you complete accessibility around, that helps us maintain the seat count, that makes it more comfortable for us. And if we were to go with another option where the tree is pushed back and complete 360-degree accessibility, our seat count drops almost 50 units down.
The concern we have is probably not the seats and the tables, but the fence.
Okay.
Does, does any of this work if any of it is outside the fence where you could serve, but you didn't? The fence is obviously liquor. Could any of it work for you where you're serving people lunch and coffee in a more public space?
I, I would tell you that we typically don't have experience splitting liquor service, non-liquor service. It's pretty tough to control that, first of all, and secondly, it creates a completely different staffing expectation and service expectation. So, I think what you're saying is if there were tables and chairs provided out there and we were able to access them, that might be what you're describing. Our concern there is it then gets into a situation of policing those tables to be open for our guests versus someone else that might be sitting there. I think that's why we felt the, most compromising for both of us was if we did integrate half of it and made it clear that, you know, the portion of the planter or the tree that is on the inside of the fence is delineated, that it's not, it's not confusing to the general public as to, am I going to have to order from Tommy Bahama here, or am I going to be able to sit here? So we, we think that it may only create a more confusing situation for the public or for the guest, and potentially make it difficult to police or politely ensure that we have those seats, or that we might not have those seats, so.
So on Option B that you presented, what is your actual seat count for Option B?
I believe it was 154.
150.
Or 152.
154, 152.
Right.
Okay. And you're proposing that?
It's, so.
I think what we're saying is our preference, obviously, is to integrate the tree. As, you know, a good faith compromise, even though we're suggesting moving the tree or leaving it where it was when we were working with the original plans for the tree, that that would be a compromise that would be more comfortable than if the tree were to stay in Option A location and we have 360-degree accessibility.
What you're proposing is to push out the tree closer to the corner, leave the tree as open and accessible to individuals who are not patrons of your restaurant.
Correct.
And that then within your, the proposed fencing area, you would have something in the, in the range of 154 seats, and that you are comfortable with that. It's not your first option, but you're comfortable with that. I, and I know I'm trying, I'm putting you on the spot, but this appears to be a proposal that comes from, from your team.
To be, to be perfectly honest, we need a decision. So we felt as though we needed to propose two options of which we could live with. And so I would say that the easiest answer is yes. We are comfortable with the second option, and we will need to figure out how to make that work, if that's what we're presented with.
And you lose nine seats under the second option.
Approximately.
Well, wait, wait, nine?
It's 164 under the first option. I counted.
I think that this gets tricky because our original goal, or our original plans, with the documentation that we had from the landlord up until the last time we were here, the tree was at a different location, and we build everything off of that. So we lose, ostensibly, we lose a lot more seats from what the original was to what either of these two options are. Obviously, the second option is where we lose the most.
And why was the, did we, did the tree get moved in the baseline case? Maybe, maybe Mr.
The best explanation I have is that plans were sent by the wrong consultant in Tommy Bahama.
Wait.
The original plans were sent by the wrong consultant to Tommy Bahamas, and they worked over tree location that was not correct. By the time we figured it out and we had plans for approval, we notified them, plans were ready with the city, and we got the tree approved based on our landscape plans in a correct location, and Mr. Hudson discovered during the last hearing that the tree was in the wrong location.
It looks as though the tree is slightly to the south in alternative, the first alternative as compared to the second alternative. Is that true?
Well, Option B that is being presented by Tommy Bahamas, I checked it with our engineer, is the location that you approved two weeks ago when the landscape plans were approved.
Well, I just, the, one reason that I'm a little concerned about Alternative 2 is that the tree is a little to the north, and its foliage will end up blocking a little bit more of the view down Main Street.
Dave, David, could you pull up the other exhibit? I just want to take a look because you can see the lineup because where the, where the, do you have a pointer?
Yeah, it's, it lines up.
Oh, I backed him.
It lines up with the tables.
So, the reason this line is here is, if you see this line here, the staircase tower, oops, the staircase tower of the Kimpton Hotel is basically lining up with this line here. So if the tree's out here, the line's here, so the tree would not block the view corridor towards the museum, which was the intent at the time, to move the building or to increase the setback along Main Street and on the corner.
Okay.
You know, the staircase tower that comes.
Right. You're saying that there's an obstruction further down the street that would control it.
I'm sorry?
There's an obstruction, the Kimpton Hotel is an obstruction further down the street.
Yeah, which is the staircase tower of the Kimpton Hotel.
Okay. This is not a public hearing item. What's the commission's pleasure, we just want to maybe give, give a consensus, Doug?
Chair, I have another question of staff, I'm sorry, not of staff, of the applicant. And, you know, I'd like to go back to the seating count. I realize, you know, I'm an architect, so I'm used to solving sometimes these, these problems. And I have two specific questions. I'm looking at sort of the two ends of the outdoor seating areas, the, the western leg of it, let's say, towards the museum, and then, on the other hand, the southern portion of Long Palm Canyon. There seems to me, I don't know, even the whole western leg of the outdoor seating seems, I think you could put more tables in there, to be quite frank, maybe some two tops against the glass, there's probably room for another table at the, the western end. And while I realize that you may not want to put seats in front of your retail windows, I think that could be a potential option in order to make this work, because certainly, as a business, I want to see this, this happen, but I think we're, we're getting to the point where, believe it or not, this tree location is quite important to all of us, and I'm hoping that we can find a way to make it work and have, you know, plenty, a lot of outdoor seating at the corner, public seating, which I think will really be a benefit to the project, and then enough seats for Tommy Bahamas to make it work. So maybe if you could answer those two specific questions as a start, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Justin Hill. I'm with MG2, the design architect for Tommy Bahama. We're out of Seattle, Washington. And specifically around your questions around seating, the idea, obviously, and it's not clear actually on this plan, is the entire wall is openable. So, part of the issue here is you want indoor/outdoor, so by putting a row of tables against the, the wall, the exterior wall, clearly you block that off. So, the idea of this bar is most of the time those walls, those walls will be open, you've got flow in between, and there's just not enough room to put another row of tables in that middle area, although I'm sure if you came back and saw the restaurant operators later, they might try. So, and then as far as putting a restaurant in front of the, in front of the retail side, they've tried that in the past. It's not successful. Those are not very active seats because they're not, they feel like they're ancillary to the, to the project, they're not really part of it. And the other part is obviously if you put the, the rail in front of the retail, then you're blocking your retail windows, and that's part of the advertising and attracting people into the retail side.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any other commission questions? I'm actually comfortable with the original version as revised, but the one proposed by the Architectural Advisory Committee with the, the splitting the tree. But I don't know what the other commissioners' feelings are on it.
I don't like the second proposal, in part because I don't like moving the tree. That, so as I'm struggling with this, it's a question of how do I feel about the first proposal? And I don't know what the other commissioners' feelings on it are, but I'm, I liked, I liked the placement of the original tree and not the movement, not moving it.
I'll propose a recommendation that we adopt the Architectural Advisory Committee proposal and the developer proposal. Is there a second to that motion? Guys, for lack of a second? Guys, for lack of a second? Hi, with Commissioner Hudson, I want to find a way to make this work. We want to see Tommy Bahama at that corner. I think it will be a great addition to, to our community. It's just trying to find the, the location that works best. If we kept Option B in terms of the seat plan, but moved the tree back a little bit closer to the entrance of the restaurant, is that something that would work for, for It would, it would accommodate a bit more seating on the, truly the sidewalk side of the tree. As it is right now, we've got a 10-foot buffer between. Do we need a 10-foot buffer all the way around the tree? And I'm not sure we'd need a full 10-foot buffer, to be honest. And that may be a way to deal with some of this.
Mr. Chair, the only comment I would make about that is you potentially would change the design of the Oculus.
Of what? The paving pattern.
The paving pattern. The paving pattern.
Does the design of the paving pattern as shown on the first drawing, actually the way it is, goes all the way through the Tommy Bahama site?
Can you change the paving pattern anyway?
That's going to be odd with the tree split.
Well, I'd like to-
Lisa, can I ask where you're going?
Yeah.
What you were suggesting, were you trying to keep the tree and the seating all around it, but leave, but move the tree back? Is that what you're-
I'm trying to move the tree so that it's not in line of sight for individuals looking down Main Street. So by bringing it one or two, a couple of feet closer to the entrance to the restaurant. So instead of having a ten-foot buffer around the tree, we have something less than that. What I think it will accomplish-
You keep it in its original location as shown on sheet three?
And-
But we have a five-foot-
I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying original location, but perhaps somewhere between the two. Then you're going to have more seating on the sidewalk side of the tree and I, for the general public. I think that's something that would be good for the restaurant patrons and for those who just simply want to sit at that corner under the tree.
Can I ask another question of the applicant, of the designer?
Sure.
On the first plan, you're showing these five little tables near the tree. Are you anticipating somebody sitting on the ledge of the tree in those tables?
Yes. Yeah, the tree, we're, we're assuming the planter has a ledge that is sitable all the way around.
I, given the two alternates, I think I'm going to second the first motion.
So you're seconding my motion at the time?
Yeah.
So my motion is resuscitated?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just like the placement of the tree and I, I think that the public will, I'm worried if we move it in, Lisa, that there isn't the room to put chairs and to have mobility and allow people to walk through it. So the, I'm assuming the ten-foot buffer was probably safety for people around the tree?
Yeah, it was in-
It's not even ten feet, it's, you know, because the, anyway, I won't get into too much detail, but the ten feet is actually to, it does, it includes the bench, in other words, so it'd probably be more like eight feet. But Kathy, I'm sort of listening to Lisa and listening to you, and I'm not sure if we need to, personally, I think that the scheme that's shown in, in Scheme A, let's call it that, where the railing basically bisects the tree well, I just don't think it's very elegant. I still think, going back to page six and Scheme, let's just call it Scheme B, I think there's still a way to make this work. I think having the tree well float with its, you know, pretty elegant seating all the way around the tree and a much simpler railing for the restaurant will be much more successful. And again, you know, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I think the architect's statement about the seating, I think there's still ways of, of getting your target number of seats and allowing us to move the tree well, at least in a compromised position towards the, the restaurant, so that that-
Do you want to do this with a subcommittee next week?
I'm, I'm just wondering if we want to have a subcommittee to work on it with the applicant?
Well, I think-
But when do you leave?
I, well, I can do this probably Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. But I think it would be terrific if maybe this, the applicant could do a quick study. And I hate to sort of belabor this, but I think it is a pretty important corner and I think as part of this, I'd like to see sort of a revision of the paving plan, too. I think that sort of oval scheme with some of the spokes, I think maybe could be restudied based on this. And again, I'm not, my, my intent in this is, is to get a great restaurant and also a great plaza for us.
So, um, let's, let me withdraw my motion.
It's my motion.
My second on the motion. Let's see, could they do, could, if I withdraw my second, could the applicant work on a re-study of this very quickly? Could we postpone this for a few minutes and see if you can find a way of sketching it out?
So our goal here today is to get an approval.
Right.
And so obviously, working in conjunction with you folks, I would say that we are open to moving the tree in and out a little bit. And I think that we are confident that we can come up with a seating plan that works. So if you are, not to suggest process, but if you're able to put forth a motion with a condition that we are moving the tree slightly, and, and I'm also hearing with access around it, I think we can make that work.
And I think we could reduce the distance in the access around it. But one thing we need to do is integrate it also with the paving plan that's out there, which I don't think, don't know that we're doing that right now.
Sorry. We were reflecting the paving plan that was approved, so I don't believe that that has changed. We have not changed that.
Well, if we move the tree, the paving plan has to change, right?
The oval shifts with the tree, yes.
It looks as though that the diameter of the ellipse around the tree is smaller in the alternative B or two or whatever we're calling it than it is with alternative A. Quite a bit.
Doug?
Maybe can, can I sort of jump in here with a recommendation? I can understand the applicant's need to get going on this with, with Mr. Braun's timelines. I'd like to propose this. I think staff obviously has heard our goal is basically to get open space around the tree well. Our goal is to move the tree closer at least to where it was originally shown. I'm not saying it actually has to match it. And I think there needs to be a minimum of ten feet clear dimension between the bench, the seating bench of the tree well and the railing of the restaurant.
Why ten, why ten feet?
I'm sorry?
Why ten feet, Doug?
I can't hear you.
Why ten feet?
I think ten feet, if we're talking about this, this movable seating and so forth, ten feet is not that much. When you sort of pace it out in, inside a room, it's really not that much. If, if it becomes necessary to do less than ten feet, fine. Personally, I'd like to see a coordination and, Mr. Braun, maybe you can, you can shepherd this through, but I think there needs to be coordination between the, the Tommy Bahama designers and the landscape architect on this project, just to sort of coordinate the paving, coordinate any ideas about this outdoor furniture, which I think is a terrific idea. But I think with that, I'm comfortable with staff approval, planning director approval in order that, that you guys can, can get going on this. I think we belabor these points. So unless commissioners, you disagree with me via that way, that would be my-
Do we have a second idea?
I'll second.
Okay, can you summarize what your understanding is?
So my understanding of the motion is that you want to try and keep the tree in its original location as close as possible, maintain a ten-foot distance from the seating to the railing while still trying to maintain the seating count for the restaurant as proposed by the applicant. Does that summarize?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I realize it's a tall order, but you're an architect and I think you can understand-
There's some flexibility on the ten feet.
There's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that there certainly could be flexibility.
So we would be happy to work with the applicant to achieve the goals of the planning commission.
Is that a seating count of one fifty-four, one sixty-four?
We'll try and get somewhere between the two of those.
Okay.
Okay, is, do everyone understand the motion on the floor? May we have a roll call vote, please? Unless there's any further comment.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Womack?
Yes.
Chair Kellardine?
Yes, the motion passes for zero.
Can staff at our next meeting show us what you came up with?
Since we'll be bringing back a resolution to you anyway, reflecting your motion, we will also bring back the plan.
Thank you.
Next item-
Gentlemen, good luck.
Next item on the agenda, multitudes. I think this one may have the record for the most times on the agenda. Dakota P.S. LLC requesting an amendment to, this is the problem, the one that causes the whole PDD problem, right? Requesting an amendment to an approved planned development district to eliminate one unit and install a trailhead to nowhere at the south end of the 6.37 acre development known as Dakota, located at fifty-one, fifteen oh one South Ballardo Road. Staff report, please.
Chair Kellardine and commissioners, at your January twenty-fifth meeting, two thousand seventeen, you considered two requests for this project, the first being modification of development plans for lots thirty-seven through thirty-nine into two parcels, effectively replacing one unit with a casita for another unit. The other request was the installation of a trailhead as required by the conditions of approval. Upon reviewing the proposals, the commission continued the matter on January twenty-fifth and directed the applicant to move unit thirty-eight five feet away from the street and return with an improved park space at the trailhead. So the applicant has submitted a revised plan showing these changes. Specifically, they've increased the building setback two feet from the street. Previously, it was eleven feet and now it's shown as thirteen feet. And they are proposing four additional acacia trees adjacent to the side of the building to screen the blank wall from the street. We have a rendering behind me here. Unfortunately, I don't have it electronically, but it does show what the view would be, behind me, it does show what the view would be from the street with the new planting that is proposed. In response to the trailhead issue, the applicant has submitted an enhanced design of the trailhead entry, and it does include seating, bike racks, boulders, planting and shade trees adjacent to the sidewalk at the very southerly end of the site. So with these changes, staff has recommended approval of the project subject to three, two conditions. The first is related to some requirements to renaturalize the graded desert that has been impacted from the overall construction of the site on this southerly end and submit a landscape plan addressing revisions from the AAC for director approval. The second condition is that prior to issuance of a building permit for the proposed homes or casitas, the applicant is to submit a lot line adjustment to the engineering department to revise the lot lines for the two new parcels that would be created from this amendment. So I can go through the plans with you quickly. What you have on the screen behind me does show the new, newly proposed layout on the southerly end of the project site with the two homes and the two casita units. This is the floor plan of the casita units. There's a casita one and casita two and the elevations of those casitas. And then this was the, this was the rendering that you previously saw back in January. So this, this isn't what they have revised, revised rendering, as I said, I don't have electronically, but it is on the, the wall behind me here and does reflect the changes that include the landscape changes and the relocated building further back. So that concludes my report. I can answer any questions you might-
Okay, questions of staff?
Yeah, we required the last time water, a water fountain. The idea of this was a little park that somebody could stop since we weren't getting, we were getting a trailhead to nothing, which was our public benefit. We had required a water fountain and a little park where you could stop and park your bike. I don't see a water fountain in there. I, I don't understand why, don't see a water fountain. Is, am I correct that there is not one?
That's correct. There is no water fountain.
Don't the staff recommend this without a water fountain? I just, I'm, I'm incensed about that.
The applicant has proposed, has proposed it this way and staff noted that those were the commission's concerns when the project was continued.
And the other requirement was to move the building five feet back and they've only moved it two feet back. Why? And why, what, what's the basis for that and for your approval of that?
Staff was comfortable with the project prior to the direction from the commission, so with the changes that they've done, we felt the project had been improved from the previous proposal. So if the applicant wishes to address the reasons for not making-
I think the applicant should address why in particular they couldn't go five feet.
Why not five feet and where is the water fountain?
Michael Braun with my development, Five Half Half Sunrise Way. I have our engineer, Alan Zamboni, here. He can comment on why we would like to keep the house where it is right now and don't push it back five feet because it doesn't make a very nice experience for the future owner of the house with regard to his side yards. With regard to the drinking fountain, I don't think any other project in the city has been required to provide a drinking fountain. We proposed that park at one point in the past, including the shade structure, because we wanted to get the Quimby fees waived and therefore created a public park there. That, we withdraw that request and therefore that public park actually is no longer necessary as a condition because it was related to waiving of certain fees. With regard to the public benefit of the project, we dedicated hillside land to the city and that was approved at the time. The reason why we don't want to provide drinking fountain, it is a maintenance hazard and the HOA would have to, will be maintaining it and that's, in our view, an unnecessary burden for those homeowners. And again, no other housing project that has been approved in the city is required to place these kind of facilities.
I'm going to make a motion on this. I'm going to make a motion.
Let's make sure everyone else is finished there.
Does everybody else have a comment?
Lisa, you okay?
I can appreciate some of the maintenance issues that are associated with a drinking fountain in a place such as this, but it is something that we ask for. And I think when we ask for something, we should be followed.
Doug?
I think, didn't, my, my memory may, may be failing me, but didn't we require a drinking fountain on that project on North Palm Canyon, far north at the corner where we had sort of a bicycle-
Yes.
-stopping off point? I believe there was a fountain there. So there is precedent.
Yeah, that was the Icon Project, formerly Alvarado.
But there was a drinking, a water fountain element there. Am I right? Okay. So I, I feel comfortable basically, you know, requiring that to appear. In terms of the setback, you know, I'm just looking at the site plan now, the sidewalk, landscaping, property line, setback wall. I think personally that there's enough, enough separation, especially with the, the augmented landscaping, that personally I'm, I'm okay with the, not, not pushing it back to the full five feet.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion.
Be my guest.
My motion is to approve the staff report but to require, my motion is to approve the staff report and require the drinking fountain. Then the reason for it is that we, as one of the public benefits, we required a trailhead but that, you haven't secured the trail for the trailhead, so this, this little bit of a parklet is in exchange for that as the public benefit. And as the project with the smallest, almost the smallest footprint of any project approved for housing units in terms of lot size, I think it's appropriate that there be public benefit, that it's a very small trade for the benefit that you, that accrued to you on this. So that would be my motion. I don't know if there's a second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lisa.
Um, we will put the water fountain in.
You will? Thank you.
Okay. I have a feeling there's, we have a consensus here. Okay. I have the feeling there's, we have a consensus here. Unless there's any further comment, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wormick?
Aye.
Chair Kellardine?
Aye, or yes.
We're done?
No.
Oh goodness.
We have item 4A, a request by the City of Palm Springs to amend the zoning code to revise the standards for hotel reservations in the R3 zone. Do we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission, this item is relative to the direction that you gave us at last, the last Planning Commission meeting. This is relative to the recent request that we had from Los Arenas Villas. I'm offering two options for you if you would like to pursue this. Option number one is to reduce the threshold requirement from 20 guest rooms to 15 guest rooms. I provide you an analysis in the staff report of approximately how many properties would then be eligible with that reduction in the threshold requirement. The other option for you to consider is there an attachment number two, and that is to remove the threshold requirement entirely and then evaluate restaurants on a case-by-case basis under a conditional use permit application. The protection that is still in place there by eliminating the threshold requirement is that under the conditional use permit process, it's still a discretionary review where Planning Commission could either approve or deny. And also under that process, we also look at things such as parking and impacts to adjacent property if a restaurant were to be added. And so I would offer both of those as options to you. I will confess, I thought last time we could make the public hearing requirement for this meeting. Unfortunately, we were one day late. It would have had to been submitted on April the 25th instead of our meeting date on the 26th. So I would have to notice this as a public hearing should we wish to make that change to the zoning code.
I would recommend the, the second option. I was thinking, in thinking about it, I think of travels to Europe and infamous restaurants and hotels on Laguna Beach and that, where there was very limited rooms, but the rooms were routed after the, after the restaurant, but rather than the other way around. But I, I think there's, there's no reason why, I mean, the number was always artificial.
Correct.
And let's go for zero, or well, one, I guess.
I, I agree with that. I don't think we're going to see that many requests and because parking will be an issue except for historic properties. And then we would be in the same situation we were in last week, but maybe not able to remedy it. So I, I think the CUP will cover it.
Is there any further discussion of this item?
I can go with this.
Hearing none. I think you have your direction. Do we need, do we need our motion or just, we have direction?
Let's go ahead and have a motion since we've gotten there.
All right. The motion is that the number should be one. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Who's a second on it?
We're approving.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wormick?
Yes.
And Chair Kellardine?
Yes.
Of course, your motion passes.
I was going to go aye, but then the yeses and the ayes will be tied.
So I will bring this back to you on a public hearing.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, Planning Commissioner reports. Does any Planning Commissioners have any?
I don't have a report, but I have two questions or one, 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 two requests. Last time when the downtown came to us, I realized afterwards that we had made no provision for the way the block B1 would be treated by the applicant while they were on hold and waiting to hope, build the Virgin Hotel or not build the Virgin Hotel and come in with some alternate. But there is a site and there's, there was no site treatment. I don't believe that went to the subcommittee that I'm a part of, at least the meetings that I was invited to of the joint Planning Commission, City Council Subcommittee on this. And I do think we need some mechanism, we need some way of making some requirements so that we don't just see an ugly temporary fence up there for years. So that, that is the first thing. And I don't know, Flynn, if there's a mechanism, if we just forgot that or-
I believe they had intended to use the same fence design that they were going to use on block F, but I don't think that was explicitly stated and it doesn't show up on the drawings. You're correct in that. Nor do I think that it was discussed with the City Council Subcommittee. So let me investigate that and come back to you with a response.
And then the second was an email I sent to you, which is, I think Lisa had had a request to tour the Dream Hotel, the adjacent neighborhoods and the Dream Hotel site. And that's something I would like to do as a commissioner, but I think it might be better if it was organized through the department.
I will ask Mr. Doubt to step in, but we have two possible options for you in terms of doing that. Number one is to do a special meeting and so we would go ahead and send out a notice and then you all could attend and tour the property. The second option would be to have you in groups no more than three of the Planning Commission members at a time. In either option, it's important to remember that you are not taking testimony at those meetings, that you are merely visiting the site and observing existing conditions. And Mr. Doubt, do you have any other counsel that you would like to give?
The only thing I would add to that is under the second option, if you were to take it upon yourselves to tour the site, but outside the context of a properly noted special meeting, I, I think Flynn has touched on this a bit already, but the point of that would be strictly for observational purposes. I know that there's residents in the area. I know that access to some of these areas are controlled, so you're invariably going to run into people out there. And I would just ask that you remind them if they seek to engage you in discourse that you're there strictly for observational purposes. The, the only other thing I would add is that when we do come back in the context of a public hearing with the intent of taking an action on this matter, it would be advisable for each of you independently just to disclose quickly on the record that you did have an opportunity to tour the site, that it was strictly for observational purposes only. And-
The last time this came before us, several years ago, when it was the Dolce Hotel, several of us, I think Commissioner Donofel certainly and myself and a couple of the other commissioners, not one at once.
Yeah, I did as well.
We did, we toured, a much more informal tour than you would like and had, and did take a lot of input from the residents and discuss with them. I still think it's part of our job, although I realize that the attorneys don't like it that way. We have, everybody has that in their background. Or some of us have it.
If we're going to do this, I feel pretty strongly that we should do the first option where we gather together as a group and publicly notice everyone and view both the site of the hotel and the Center Court site. It is going to be exceedingly difficult for two or three commissioners to walk the grounds of Center Court and not engage with the residents there.
And it allows people to give testimony because it's a notice meeting and therefore it, it makes it easier if someone wants to say something, to say it.
One of the things I would caution is I would like to make sure that testimony is also offered at the scheduled public hearing of the item.
Of course.
That I don't want members of the public to think that that is the opportunity to give it. I would encourage them to attend the public meeting and give that. So as you are deliberating on the matter, that will be considered as part of the testimony that you're considering at that point in time. What I would-
Would I be able to attend such a meeting on an informational basis?
Yeah. So if there's a regular or a special meeting that's noticed and scheduled, I suppose you could attend as an interested member of the public, but not in your capacity as a planning commissioner. So I don't know which hat you would choose to wear that day, but-
I'd probably, well, I'd attend as a member of the public and the vice chair would have to be the chairman of the meeting.
Correct.
We could start at my house.
If, the first option is what you would prefer as a noticed meeting, what I would recommend is that we do that next Thursday. And Mr. Hudson, I know that's not going to work for you, but we do need to be able to-
Right.
-properly advertise the meeting. Could we-
And I have been on the site a long time ago. This project has been around for so long, so I'm aware of sort of the sightlines and how that complex is light up.
We've had a tour of the units.
Yeah, I was going to offer an individual tour if you needed one. Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and schedule that. I'll let you all know if we're able to do it on Thursday and I will go ahead and contact you and we'll post that as a special meeting.
Just in terms of the next meeting, because we have two members absent and Lynn will have to exempt, we probably have to make sure we have, we have at least five people present or we won't be able to deal with the item again.
I would be very upset if we don't have four voting members at our next meeting.
But we know we don't have two.
We know we don't have two.
We know we don't have three. Lynn can't vote on this, so-
Yes. So I need the remaining members-
Yes.
-who are not previously excused to be in attendance.
Can I move for two weeks? I will, by the way, I will be on vacation the first meeting in June.
I just want to commend you all for getting through the agenda today. We had a very lengthy agenda and only four members of the Planning Commission, so I do appreciate you-
You were talkers.
But I do appreciate you moving through the agenda. We got a lot accomplished and I do appreciate that. One of the things to take into consideration is while we may continue items, the work is still coming into the Planning Department. And so I really, really would dissuade you from continuing items where there is no need to do so. There were some emails going around suggesting that would be perhaps delay action on some of these items. And again, that just creates additional work from staff and it doesn't stop the new work from coming in. And so again, I do like to try and get to items in a timely manner. Also, there's the interest of the public, that we have an agenda that's published, they have an expectation that the item will be heard. And that's both applicants and members of residents who want to testify on items. So again, I appreciate all the work that you all have done today and I thought your discussions were excellent in terms of considering all of the things that we needed to do today. We got through a lot. And so again, my thanks to you all.
This is just a question to the attorney on the comments on the loft plan. Do you anticipate that will be coming back to us or would that be dealt with the council?
What was the, what happened with that?
Yeah, I'm honestly not in a position to provide a briefing on that right now, but I would be happy to look into it and provide you with a written update-
Okay.
-prior to the next meeting.
What was overruled, the, the CQ?
In the litigation, yes.
Yeah. The only aspect that was overturned was the event space up on the roof level of the building. The other issues of the general plan amendment and so forth were upheld. What this requires the applicant to do, the judgment, is essentially the event space needs to be removed. But in terms of the process of how that occurs, I'm not exactly privy to those details. I'm not exactly sure how that's going to happen.
What the basis of the event space removal?
It was the issue of parking that it hadn't been accounted for in the parking study that was provided.
Flynn, is my memory correct that the City Council did not take any action at its last meeting other than to continue 750 lofts to a future City Council meeting?
They rescinded the items relative to the event space. So that would have been the major architectural application and that aspect of the plan development. And they did direct the city attorney to schedule it for the next City Council meeting.
So would it, they're taking it as just modifying the project?
Quite honestly, I'm not sure what the process is.
The city, I think the issue probably was if they vacated the major architectural, did it have to start new or can it stay at City Council? But that, that's not an issue for us, right? It comes to us or it doesn't.
Okay, with that, unless there's any further ado.
And we should hold on to this. You're not going to give us a new one of these, right?
I don't want to print another one of those.
The, you might suggest to them that the, they, they don't have anything, any treatment really on Avenue de Caballeros. They should probably look at that before the next meeting. The building, the building that backs up to Avenue de Caballeros is very, it's just a flat wall.
Oh, okay.
Now, I guess I'm speaking there as a local resident, but the meeting is therefore adjourned.